To seek said conditional use permit, which they understand is not a guarantee of approval, but would not be a possibility if the zoning on their property remains R-1. So they are aware, any rezoning application, if it should be approved by the town, does require further public hearing for the actual use they're seeking through a conditional use permit. So there would be another public hearing if this stage of approval occurs. In my staff report, I've given you a review with respect to... Sorry, I'm just trying to bring Ian back in again. If I can't get him by phone, we're gonna try him one more time in teams. Ian, are you there? Let me in. Admit... Sorry, one second, folks. Ian, are you there?
I am here.
Okay. So, I can't get you by camera, but you got the audio. Yes? Are you good?
Yeah.
Okay. So, at this point, with respect to our comprehensive plan, I have cited certain sections and elements out of our comprehensive plan that I think are supportive of this application. I'm not gonna go into those in detail. They are part of your staff report. I am happy to expound upon them as needed as we get further into this discussion this evening. I touched upon both the economic chapter, transportation objectives and strategies. I think those are the two sections I highlighted for them. I am flagging, just so you're aware, in the future land use map of our comprehensive plan, it does not outright seem to support this application. However, as you read the supportive narrative that describes our future land use map designation of historic district residential, I do feel there is supportive language in there that could support this application for rezoning. In our zoning ordinance, I did provide you the sections that give you the intent statements for both the R1 district, where it currently is zoned, and the proposed CR intent statement, where they are hoping to move over to for zoning purposes. And in addition, I have given you the comparison chart of all the uses, both by right and conditional uses, for the R1, as well as for the CR. And again, in the CR chart, I highlighted the five uses that they've agreed to strike from their zoning application. As I've mentioned, this has been an established bed and breakfast to the town for just over 14 years, if I've done my math correctly. I did wanna point out, we have seen a huge conversion of these types of establishments of bed and breakfasts in this community, back into a residential use. So, we don't have many bed and breakfasts remaining as an established business at this point in time. And we do know that many of the residential properties that once were bed and breakfasts have actually moved over to become short-term rental capacity uses. So there are some strong considerations. This is a type of business use we'd like to see in our community. I do feel somewhat of an obligation to listen to the property owners to see what would it take to enhance to ensure that they can stay viable as a business. So with that said, my recommendation at this point in time is supportive of this application for your consideration this evening. It is contingent upon hearing from any public comments that may come in at this point in time. I will make you aware, we notified all the adjacent property owners as part of the public hearing notification. We received no letters, or texts, or emails into our office on this application. And I do know the applicants are here, if you would like to hear from them.
Yes. The Kohlers and Ms. Only here. Would you like to...
Donna Kohler, 711 Tazwell.
Gregory Kohler, 711 Tazwell.
Slash 302 Fig. So... (laughing).
Okay, so, do you have anything to say to the commission? Add to what...
I think we did a very thorough application. We've been working with Katie. We just, we approached Katie a long time ago. Just wanted to know what our options were, what our choices were, and possibly expanding the business. We put forth those five proffers. We're absolutely willing to consider putting more in there. We kind of left it open. We have two children. One is 19, one is 15. One is very artistic and is a costume designer. One is very much into beautish beauty. And so we kind of left those things in there, because if we have an ability to either give them a business, or have them develop a business on the land, that's why we left those things in there. If we had the potential to have another building, to expand the bed and breakfast, it's really just a wish list. We don't have any funding or backing to do anything. Right now, we just wanna start with bike rentals. So, it's as simple as that. And if we put all that information in there, it would be 10 bikes that would be available, mostly to our guests.
Mainly to our guests.
But it would also be available to the public. The diagram's in there. We don't think it really impacts the neighborhood too much, or the property. And it's all, it's all done out in the cloud, so it's very, there's no major changes to the property itself.
Any of the commissioners wanna say anything to the Kohlers?
Doesn't look like there would be a parking issue, because it looked like it would be pretty much a two-legged transportation to pick up a bike and take off.
Walk up and get it.
Yep. We have, we have all the parking for the guests. We have an off-street parking for guests and for us as owners. But there is, right now, there is a lot of, I shouldn't say publicly, there's a lot of ample parking spaces on that end of Tazwell. Don't tell anybody. But it's, it would not be a problem for people to park there, but yes.
Yeah.
As Jim says, it's mostly, you're gonna walk up, or get dropped off, pick up your bike, and go.
Yeah.
So, let me ask this question. You have the two parcels that are...
Yes.
Yes.
That are to the east of your main parcel...
Right. The house is on 5, and then plus the two.
That you basically say are gardens now.
Mm-hmm.
Do you have any intentions of doing anything with that in the near future?
Not in the near future. No, absolutely not. That's what we would potentially develop something for our children. We both have very aging parents as well. We talked about that as an option, and I know that that does not have to be CR to do that. We...
We have no plans.
We have no plans.
We just wanted to keep our options open.
Yeah.
So, let me ask you, based on that, would you be adverse to having the CUP for just the main property, since you have the bike rentals there? It's on the main property, right?
Yes. The C... Yes.
So, the, to the rezone of just your main property, and future consideration for the last two pieces of property could come at a later time if you so desired?
We are willing to consider. But my immediate inclination would be, and we are not selling, I don't wanna start a rumor that we're selling, that if we were to sell, that that has the potential to be an issue with a purchaser, to have five CR and two R1s. We don't want, 'cause we do, we get approached all the time to sell. We, we don't, we would not wanna split them up in a sale.
But the other, right, but the other properties on the east side of that are R1?
Right, the gardens. Yep. That's what we, if we are going to develop any sort of additional business, that's where those businesses would go.
But that's down the road.
Correct. Yes.
All right, I think we're getting ahead of ourselves. We need to ask questions and then listen to...
Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Ian has one question, so, go ahead, Ian.
Is, would we be permitted residential and conditional use permits on that bike or that concept of the government or the council?
Sure. So, any expansion of business use on this property cannot happen through a conditional use permit, because there's a limitation in the residential -1 zoning district currently there, that limits the type of business uses that can happen through conditional use permit. The bed and breakfast is one of those allowances, but say a bike rental is not. That is why they are seeking the rezoning of the Fig Street Inn as a whole. I think what Mr. Strand is indicating is maybe some consideration that two parcels, which really are not developed, but are just serving as garden or landscaping supplements to the nature and appearance of the property, could be segregated out from this rezoning application. But that's just something he floated as part of his discussion points, but that's no condition being put by anybody at this point.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have any public comments?
Did anybody sign up?
Yeah.
If you would grab the sign-up sheet, Jack, please. Again, as I said, we received no written comments for tonight's hearing. If you could provide that to Bill, please.
Dennis Seadat?
Sayad.
Sayad. Okay, sorry. Stick your name and your address, please.
Dennis Seadat, 116 Fig Street. I'd like to start out by saying that I've had my property for 12 years, and that I've had no problems with the bed and breakfast, or Donna and Greg, and I think they're lovely neighbors. And I, however, am opposed to the change in the zoning primarily, first, all the contiguous properties are all residential, and it's in, is in the historic district, and I don't personally believe that changing it to any form of commercial is appropriate for the area. And as actually you stated, one of the other things I was thinking of was that the two residential properties could potentially be sold off down the road, and if the zoning is changed on those, somebody else could come in and do something. And I don't, I don't really wanna see any kind of real commercial thing beyond the bed and breakfast in that area. Also, I believe parking is a bit of an issue with the advent of all the short-term rentals that are in the area now, especially some of the larger ones. The parking is overflowing into that 700 block of Tazwell. I personally have two vehicles, only one spot to park off-street, so I park around the corner on there. And I also know that my neighbors across the street also park a vehicle over there. And right now, there's five other vehicles that are parked along there. So, if there were, you know, a business type of thing going on, there'll be additional parking for that as well. And one of my other major concerns is the traffic that's on Fig Street. Fig Street has got a tremendous amount of track, traffic, with tractor-trailers coming up-down for Wendell's, building supplies coming in for the Marina Villages, the restaurant delivery-type things for the oyster farm, and hardly anybody goes the proper speed limit. That is a major concern of me living on Fig Street. I don't know how they manage to get up to 40 miles an hour coming off of Randolph, but they do it on a very regular basis. And then, one of the last concerns that I have is the, if the zoning is changed, and those two residential properties are changed with them, that down the road, they could be sold off. Things change in a heartbeat. You have, you know, you just don't know what's gonna happen. And if those properties are sold off separate from the Fig Street Inn, I don't know. I don't think that's a good idea. And, well, that's about it.
Okay. Thank you. Bruce Evans?
My name is Bruce Evans. I live at, or own the building at the corner of Fig and Tazwell. It's 652 and 654 Tazwell Avenue. I live diagonally. The corner of my property faces the corner of Donna and Greg's. We know them quite well, because they ran a bed and breakfast as we did. We ran it for 25 years. They came, I said about 12 ago. They're great to work with in every respect. However, I do have great concern, because in the, in the block from Nectarine to Fig, there are 34 short-term rental rooms in various houses. Thirty-four. Most of the time, you can't find a place to park. The people that stay in our old bed and breakfast at 645 Tazwell Avenue have been asked by the people that own it to park their golf carts, boats, kayaks, surfboards in the alley, the partial alley behind the house. When we operated that, and it was a conditional use, that we had to put two parking places back there, because we had five rooms. Now, the bed and breakfast, we sold it, it has seven rooms. We put two bedrooms in the attic for our quarters. Nothing against Donna and Greg, but I think this is a grave, grave error, especially for the two lots next to them that are facing Fig Street. And I think they're both in beautiful Boxwood Gardens right now. But I think if you, with 30-something rooms in that block, and with something that could turn into businesses that might cause some contention, I think it's very dangerous to zone all of this, or change the zoning on all of it separately. A bicycle shop is no way gonna take up two lots, and I don't think they intended that. But there is, you know, there could be a beauty parlor, that's fine. There could be many other things that would be authorized. But it's additional people, it's additional parking, even if it's off-street. So, I didn't know about this, even living on the corner. The only way I found out and got a notice about it is I called Tracy, and she emailed me a copy, I guess about four days ago. But it is an extreme concern, what it'll do to the value of the properties on there, the change in the complexion, personality of the neighborhood with that much traffic. It, I think it's a total, total mistake. It will devalue my fourplex tremendously. And they're all, they're not short-term rentals, they're all long-term rentals. Very nice tenants and such, but I think it's a grave mistake to add this complication to that area of Fig Street and Tazwell Avenue.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Time's up, Bruce. Thank you. Tom Weaver?
My name is Tom Weaver. My address is 702 Monroe Avenue. I live directly behind the Fig Street Inn. The purpose of being here was to get some clarification on the rezoning, and you did an excellent job, Ms. Nunes, in doing that. If I understand it correctly, the application is to change the zoning, but then, if it falls outside of the by right list, then they would have to come back to this commission, is that correct?
And require public hearings for any of the conditional use...
Okay, all right. Then my support is all in. I mean, I think it's great. I think it's good for the community, and you'll judge the others as they become evident. So, thank you.
Okay. Questions? Concerns?
Is that the end?
That's the last, that's the last one.
Late for my motion to close the public hearing.
Second? Okay, so we have a motion to close the public hearing, and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Closed? Okay, curious? Any, we have, next item, assist and comment period for any item not subject to advertised, to an advertised public hearing?
We don't have anyone signed up for this.
Okay. Unfinished business, we have none. New business, discussion and possible recommendation vote on zoning map amendment 2024-01. Discussion.
I'll open it up. When I go through the historic, and I know we have words that we extracted into the staff report with the historic district residential, I think it's a stretch in this particular application to say a business in the historic district residential area. To go to the actual wording and the details in our complaint, it talks about meeting the housing needs for Cape Charles, maintaining single-family residential character of the district, allow for diverse mixture of compatible recreational, governmental, residential uses that currently exist in the district. Those are the two functions. And then, preferred uses is obviously should consist primarily of single-family dwellings. So, from my perspective, this original cover that was for this 302 Fig was the operation of the six-bedroom bed and breakfast, five bedrooms in one house, and one bedroom for accessory building. So, it's very specific, and it adhered to what the R1 allowed for at that particular point in time. To convert that particular property over to CR, no less these two additional ones, which are strongly opposed. That now expands commercial into residential, that I think is contrary to what our comprehensive plan states. I understand the desire to expand business in the inn for bicycles, and if there was some way other than designating as CR, which I don't think there is, I'd go for that, but I certainly will not support the additional two properties. And I'm sort of on the fence, listening for others, on the main property, Lot A, to pull it.
Thank you. Do you have any comments?
Ian, do you have any comments?
My, my initial sense is that Bill's suggestion, those names suggesting of potentially excluding the second two lots from the historical, which kind of, I could get one more question here.
So, it looks like he is falling in line with where you stand, Mr. Grossman, what Mr. Strand articulated as well, is not including the two garden lots, or vacant, not developed lots, in this rezoning application.
Well, the other thing I've offered here, if we were to just concentrate on Lot A, if that was acceptable, what happens to other bed and breakfasts that we have in the town? Anything that would set precedence in this particular case to say, oh, I want to change mine to CR and open up any one of these other permitted uses?
It's a lot-by-lot consideration for any, any rezoning application that comes forward.
Correct. Right. So, that's all I'm saying, that anything that we decide here would potentially set, yes, each one is individual, but it certainly is a precedence that I'm not sure I wanna get into.
No further discussion?
Well, I'd like to hear others as far as how they feel on Lot A.
Yeah.
Converting just that into CR, whether that you feel acceptable or not.
I don't have a problem with that. Just the one lot.
Okay.
I'm more inclined for the single lot, and then the other two lots remain as R1.
Yep.
Yeah, I would support Katie's proposed motion for a redesignation of all three lots.
Okay, you heard my, my comments. Commissioner Grossman?
Can you refute the motion we couldn't hear?
There hasn't been, it hasn't been a motion yet.
There's not a motion yet on the floor.
I couldn't understand the argument.
There's not a motion on the floor yet.
Okay.
I have done a proposed motion in my staff's report, but that has not actually been a motion made by any member of the floor.
Thanks, Katie.
Commissioner Grossman, you would like to make a motion?
Can I? I'm sorry. Can I ask a question? Just, just so I'm clear. How would redesignating, I mean, I understand the redesignation, but from like a functional type of purpose, right? The house on Lot A was already a bed and breakfast, correct?
No. It was made into a bed and breakfast in 2010.
2010, right. And it was approved for that use in 2010.
Correct.
Right, okay. So, functionally, I mean, just day-to-day, there wouldn't be that much difference if we passed Katie's motion with regard to Lot A, right? I mean, it's already, they already have permission for it to be a B and B, right?
That's correct.
Okay.
But I'd say no, that's not the case.
Okay.
Because if I convert it to a CR, all these by rights are permitted.
Could happen there.
They could turn that into an art gallery, into a real estate office.
But they'd have to come, but they'd have to come...
No.
No, no?
Those are by right.
For the by right uses, no, they would have the right to convert it for those uses. Anything under the conditional use section, we need to come back for a public hearing, both to the planning commission and the town council. And again...
That's my fear. I'm not, I'm not worried about converting now from an inn into something, but the potential is always it. Somebody can sell this property, if it was CR, and say it's open to either residential, it's very flexible, residential, or any of these permitted uses.
Right. And of course, and the restrictions or lack thereof would run with the property, I mean, to the new, to the new title holder. Right? Okay.
So, that's why I'm, you know, leaning against even CR on Lot A.
I still support Katie's motion, the draft, the redesignation.
So, maybe it would help to move this along, either, your options this evening are, you could table this if you need further discussion amongst the commission as a whole to make your recommendation. Potentially, we need to reopen our conversations and discussion with the applicant, to see if there are any further revisions they may wish to consider in the submission of their application to you for conditional rezoning. That would be one option. Your second option could be someone make a motion this evening, and we move forward with acting upon a vote on said recommendation motion.
I'd like to table it and have an opportunity to discuss it more.
Well, in terms of what more do you want to find out?
Well, I, because I don't have a problem with just the one, and, you know, just having, hearing some of the discussion, I understand some of the concerns that others may have with the other two lots. I also, but I also understand the concern, how it changes their property values. And some, and some of the, the things that are possible, I mean, with the historic review, I mean, you can, you can put some conditions on what, what these various businesses would look like, or how they, they would build the buildings, or something like that. So, I mean, right, I mean, that, right now, that's where I would just say I'm okay with just the one property, but I would like to table it to, to think about it.
So...
But we don't have to agree to, I mean, we don't have to agree to...
You know, I'm looking at the permitted uses by right, and Commissioner Grossman did state that he's on the fence, because... because if they sold, if they sold the property and if it is CR, they can have an antique shop there, art galleries, beauty and barber shops, candy stores, clothing stores, day spas, dry goods stores, florists, gift shops, leather goods, offices, real estate sales. So, bye-bye.
Are we allowed to discuss any further? Are we allowed to comment?
That, that would be a decision of the board.
I did, I did understand that they, that the proffers were, you did mention that the proffers could be changed.
I'd like to hear from the oldies if they want to comment again.
So if you want to, that
Partly if, if that is the case, if we feel there should be some continued discussion with the applicant from staff to raise these issues further and have some discussions that came out of part of the public hearing comments, we are happy to do that. So tabling may be the appropriate action at this point to allow those conversations to happen with the applicant to see if they, if they would like to refine their application.
Okay.
Okay, I think the applicant has heard some of our concerns. All right, the conversations cannot occur through our planning commission other than through you and just one or two at a time. So there is no separate means outside this to gather more information other than individually through your office.
So I, I think if, if, just so, I want to make sure I'm clear of all of the community issues that I have heard raised this evening relative to impact on parking and the impact of travel, types of businesses that could occur on this property, the ambiguity associated with the non-developed component of their property with the two garden lots, as you would call them, and a desire to possibly segregate those lots out from any rezoning proposal coming forward on this. And any, maybe reconsideration to further look at the by right uses and see if they can be further streamlined to the ones that may not be as intensive in use into a commercial sector translating into that residential neighborhood.
And I'd add to that, a relook at the comprehensive plan in total. Right now, I think it's a little bit misleading extracting to support what was presented without looking in total as to what the residential district entails. So that, that needs further
How long have those two lots, how long have your two lots been empty?
120 years, since the house was built.
20 years?
120.
120 years.
The house was built in 1899, since it's 1899.
Those lots have laid fallow for 120 years.
Yeah, so the, the end of the two lots are right across from the end of Meatland.
So we do have CR
Right across.
On the end of Tazwell. And then we have CR down the road with Wendell. So to have CR sprinkled in residential is not
Right across from
Out of character. In regards to changing, our changing by right use of our building and being concerned about parking, we do have an off-street parking lot that can accommodate six cars should people choose to park smartly. So there is, there is off-street parking provided at that, at that address.
So I still need a motion of some sort?
So can I get
I'll make a motion that we table this for further development of the application.
Second?
Okay, we have a motion to table this for further development. In a second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
And Ian said aye as well to the motion.
Okay. Okay, report of officers and committee's nuns, standing staff reports, planning and zoning director?
I did include an August staff report for your consideration. We've given you an update on all of the subdivision approvals or, or any sort of lot development approvals that I bished out of my office. It's a lengthy one since it's been a few months since we have given you an annual, an annual, a monthly report to that effect. And then we've also given you the updates from the board of zoning appeals. There is an upcoming hearing next week for an appeal to a decision issued by my office relative to 004 Bay Avenue. We've done nothing on harbor development certificates. And recently, last week, we had a meeting of the Wedlands Board in which they affirmed the administrative approval that is allowed on our zoning ordinance for the approval of some doomed walkways for six parcels over in the Bay Creek areas. And that whole list is provided to you. And that is it for the staff report.
Thank you. Announcements, next meeting, regular meeting Tuesday, September 3rd,
Yes.
2024 at 6:00 p.m. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion?
Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right.